I'd like to thank everybody for coming this morning. If you'd join us for a short prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be here this morning to lead the county. We just pray, dear Lord, that the decisions we make here today will be the best for the most people in the county and the decisions we make would be pleasing unto you. We ask, dear Lord, that you lay your hand upon our law enforcement officers and help keep them safe. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Declare this meeting open. If you'll join us for the play of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I thank everybody for coming this morning. We do have kind of a big agenda here today, but we'll move through it just as quick as we can. Minutes for our last meeting have been circulated among the commissioners. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second. If I also had a claims docket circulated among the commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims.
I'll also make that motion.
Second. First thing we have on the agenda this morning is EMS snow removal agreement. Hi David, how are you this morning?
Good, sir. How are you?
I'm good.
Route 54 landscaping does our mowing. They presented me with a quote to assist us with snow removal this winter and I wanted to bring it before the commissioners and Marvin if you could consider.
I saw. The only question I had is are they going to do automatically? When there's an inch of snow, they're going to come or are they going to just come whenever you call?
Well, that's something we haven't got to find details. Other details, do we really need them for just one inch of snow?
Right.
During the day, actually, in talking with Mr. Michaels, you know, the county can come and help during the day. Once they're, if they're there, they can help and help us out. Maybe considers us, you know, if we get done with the snow in the middle of the evening or non-working hours to help us get in and out there back at the Latin Station.
I'm fine with it. I'd like for it to be that when we call them, they come. That would be the price instead of them just coming whenever they thought we needed the service.
Yes, sir.
Unless you're just comfortable with what the...
No. I'd rather call them than...
That's the way I'd prefer that it be. You call them, they come. Marvin, can you work that out in the contract with them?
Sure.
Any other discussions?
No.
Questions? I'd entertain the motion then that we would approve the agreement with the provision that President of Commissioners can sign the contract once Marvin has it prepared.
So made.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, David. Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have the employee handbook and EMS appendix updates. Marvin sent this out to all of us and I know there's been some questions on it. And what, I think what the idea was that the updates that have been provided are strictly for the PTO policy. There was several questions that we got about different things in the handbook and those are some things that we just have not addressed yet. Does that clear things up, Marvin, do you think?
Good enough for now.
So that was, that was where we're at. I mean, we've spent a tremendous amount of time on the PTO policy to try and get that worked out to where it's equitable for everybody. Heather, impressed with all the changes that were made. I mean, it's a lot of work. Heather, do you have anything you want to add to that? So the council has not looked at this yet. So would you like to hold off on any approvals until the council looks?
That would be my preference because I think we could act quicker than the council. It's just a larger group. It takes them longer to absorb what else is going on. If they approve it, well, I think we can approve it pretty quickly.
And we meet twice as fast.
There you go. Well, they'll meet this month. They'll meet on Monday night and then we'll meet on Tuesday morning right after.
So if they want to make any changes, we could do it.
Yeah.
That would be my preference.
Yes. Then I would entertain the motion that we table this until our next meeting. So make...
Second.
All in favor? Next, we've got Resolution 2025-14, which is the Highway Superintendent Signature Authorization. This would allow Brent Diner to sign any community crossings or those types of agreements that would, that would come across. We did have a resolution for him to be able, have the authority to sign those as the interim. And this would just be an extenuation of that now that he has been named the full-time Highway Superintendent.
Makes sense to me.
So I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-14.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Next, we've got the Green County Treasurer Commissioner Certificate sale. Good morning Samantha.
I meant to email this, I didn't get it. Sorry. Tax haven't been busy. So what I gave you was the properties that weren't sold at the tax sale first part of October, which would be the properties that would be on the commissioner's sale that we talked about. So out of the 57 properties that didn't sold, 16 of them are improvement only slant, so they probably won't even be looked at if we did a commissioner's sale. So then we're looking at 41 properties that would actually probably potentially sell.
So all we need to do is decide a minimum amount?
Yep. I need to make sure that we're still wanting to do it with the potential 41 properties. I need to know the minimum amount that you guys approve. And then potential dates will be March 10th, 11th, or 12th depending on SRI. But the sooner I get the information, the sooner I can get with them to get it scheduled.
I think in the past, what we've done is the minimum bid for property would be 10% of what's owed. Does that ring a bell with anybody else?
I think we went lower than that.
I believe the last commissioner's sale that we did, the minimum bid was $70. But I would like to see that a little bit higher.
So what's your recommendation?
At least 100, if not 125.
Have any other comments? So do we have different amounts for different properties or do we have the same?
No, it's just one set amount. So the minimum bid would start, if we did 100, it would start at 100 and it could go up to whatever the winning bid would be.
Okay, what's the lowest?
The lowest amount owed on any of the properties is $336.26.
I think $125 doesn't sound that bad.
Obviously, 200, but...
Hey, we can do 200 too. I'm not opposed to that. I just feel like 70 is too low.
Yeah.
For the time, the effort that goes into it, the paperwork and all that stuff, I think 70 dollars is too low.
If a property's not worth 200 bucks, it's not worth anything.
Right.
Yeah.
When I do my figures, I did it at 200, but I didn't want to come in being greedy.
That's okay. I love the treasurer, who's always greedy.
No, that's you guys. I just make your money.
So is that what you're thinking? You'd like to see 200 dollars as a minimum bid? If you guys are both okay with that, I would entertain a motion that we set the minimum bid for the commissioner's certificate sale at 200 dollars.
So made.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I will get with SRI. Thank you, guys.
Good work. Next, we've got the 2026 holiday schedule and commissioner meeting dates. I think Heather sent this out to everybody.
I did.
And this just follows the state on the holidays?
Yes, the holiday is exactly what the state has already put out for next year.
Yeah, this is normally what we follow, just follow the state's schedule. Questions, comments?
Yeah, those are reasonable changes.
I would entertain the motion to approve the holiday schedule and the commissioner's meeting schedule.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I don't have any commissioner board appointments this morning. Economic Development, Breann, good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see you sunshine.
Thank you. See? Good to see you. I've been harassed already.
Oh, well.
Okay. Last week, I was approached by a commercial real estate developer who has expressed an interest in properties at Westgate. So in preparation for his visit next week, I'm going to send any information I've got on Progress Point and then the Trout House, that corner property, and then others that we have in Green County. Primarily, he's talking, he's talked to the hotel owner already to talk about what would kind of go with what they've got. So he just wants to see what we have to offer.
Good.
Hopefully, that'll be...
Let's get something built down there.
No kidding, no kidding. And then, of course, we've got that meeting today for Prometheus. I mean, I'm glad that Green County is wanting to do whatever we can to keep the ball rolling and just the lack of information is less than frustrating. One of my board members, who's on utilities, he called the meetings a waste of time. So he said it, not me. But anyway, so hopefully we'll, when I was talking with Dave Osman last week, I said, what if we gather all this information and we share it with Simon, maybe that will help. You know, this is where we're at, between the timelines that we're setting for ourselves. So hopefully, we'll move things forward. I don't know.
Yeah.
And then, I've been talking with several folks, Bloomfield, Linton, talking about different locations for housing and wanting to prioritize that list, which I've talked about before, but we're actually starting to drill down some properties. I've got a guy from Bloomfield who sends me properties all the time, about what about this one, about this one. So it'll be nice to have a big list to share with the developer, what about these for housing? So, and then GCC is also, one of my passion projects is youth retention and future workforce. So we are having a lunch and learn on November 18th to get the schools and employers in the same room to talk about for the revenue.
Good.
So, yeah, that's it.
Sounds like you have plenty to do.
I do have plenty to do, thank you. Oh, and my sister resigned.
So you're, you're back in the market for another helper.
I am.
Quit being so hard on them and they won't all leave you.
I know, I know. I'm just like Murphy Brown, so...
Slave driver.
Yeah. Off we go. Thank you.
Thanks, Breann. County Attorney, Marvin, you have anything for us this morning?
I feel like I should, but I don't.
Well, we'll never argue with that. Do we have any elected officials or department head comments this morning? Morning, Michael.
Morning. Just a couple.
I guess I skipped over you on the other...
That's all right. I have to wait until after anyway, so. The first item that I had was our IN.gov domain. I guess we've had one for about a year now and they are requiring us to go on their website and register to maintain the domain. I believe it's more of just like updating like a contact list for the state to contact if some things need to happen. It needs someone that's like an appointed official or elected official to fill it out. I don't know if I necessarily qualify for that, but I was going to ask if one of you all could assist in helping me fill that out.
I think Ed's already got the form part filled out, so all we have to do is have electronic signature on it.
And the other thing I'd like to just ask is to also have the IT department added as a, I forget what it's called.
Contact?
Yeah, like an authorized contact.
I would, I'd rather you be, the department being named as authorized contact.
I appreciate that. And that's real all that...
Yes, sir. I guess we probably need to have a motion to go ahead and, so I would entertain the motion to approve the email domain change to IN.gov.
Is that what we're doing? We're going to change our?
That will be a future project, ideally, once we get our Barracuda systems upgraded next year.
That was a future plan, but I didn't know it was quite ready for it yet.
Right, yeah. We're still going to maintain our co-green domain that we have.
Okay.
This is just to keep the IN.gov domain so that we can migrate to that next year.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So I would entertain the motion that we go ahead and fill the application out to keep the IN.gov domain.
And give Commissioner Michael the authority to sign whatever he needs to sign?
Yeah, that too.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you. The second item is the 4H Event Center. I know we had this conversation early on in the year about replacing the networking equipment. I believe that we were still waiting on some of the construction to finish up and kind of redoing the quote that we needed for the new equipment out there. I have a quote from Endeavor. It would be, I would say, my preferred for out there at 4H because they have all the notes on the equipment because they've worked on the equipment out there before in the past. But I have a quote from Endeavor. I wasn't necessarily looking for an approval today. It was more of, I guess, asking if this is something that we could look at doing this year or if this would be more of a next year thing.
I don't, if we need to have it done, we need to have it done. It's not going to be cheaper next year than it is this year.
Right.
And as I said, we can kick it down the road and just cost ourselves more money. So...
Yeah, I refuted the quote. It needs to be updated. I don't believe it's correct. I think it's going to have to have some stuff added to it. I'd really like for Ed to...
I think it is a little older quote. I thought that the same time.
Yeah.
I don't know how long it's been over there, but I want to add it up.
And reach out to them again. Who put that equipment in originally?
I would assume Endeavor. I don't recall any of your truck ever doing that out there.
I don't know who else you've reached out to about this.
Matrix.
Matrix?
Yeah. I'd say their quote was comparable.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know enough of even to be dangerous about it. So I just don't understand all that stuff.
I think Ed needs to get with Michael and they need to decide what they want out there and seek a couple quotes.
Yeah, and I would, I would like to get this done ASAP.
Yeah, I think there's time we could obligate that money. We have, we have money that we could use to get that done yet this year, so.
Yeah, I would, because it's not going to be cheaper next year. So...
Yeah, with EMA out there, we need to get it done.
Yeah, the quicker the better.
We'll freshen up our quotes and come back.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Do we have any other department heads? Good morning, Richard.
Morning. Thank you. This is just a reminder that we've moved all of our ceremonies that we used to have on the Courthouse Pond over to Shawnee Theater for Veterans Events. And the next one will be Veterans Day on the 11th of November, 11:00 a.m., Shawnee Theater. And our guest speaker this year will be Mark Turney and he's the Chief of Public Affairs at Indianapolis VA Medical Center. So that'll be a good little talk.
Good.
Appreciate all of it.
Appreciate you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
What time is that, Richard?
11:00, 11:00 a.m.
Good morning, Sheri.
Good morning. I just wanted to share some good news with you guys.
We always like to hear good news.
Yes, this is great news. The Health Department was awarded two philanthropical awards. We got $1,500 from, what is it, UDWI RMC. And we got $1,000 from the Upland Realty Association for the Food as Medicine Program.
Great.
So we're going to put that for next year.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good news is always appreciated. Do we have any other department heads or elected officials with comments this morning? Do we have any public comments this morning? Okay, for discussion item this morning, I do have the Purdue Extension Agreement.
With Purdue Extension, would we be allowed to come up and share some things?
Sure.
For this discussion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
We are Purdue Extension.
My name's Shawna, I'm the Ag and Natural Resources educator here at Green County.
And I'm Delia Rush. I'm a Health and Human Science educator and CED. And I'd like to introduce our 4H educator, Gabrielle Fricks. Nice to meet you. We would just like to share the partnership that we have with Green County and Purdue Extension. We feel and we believe Purdue offers many services and programs that help to support the needs of this community. And we're going to all kind of share this a little bit with you. One of them that is a really good one is the guide to grant writing. It's important to the county. It can be offered to any of the counties here in Indiana, but it is one where millions of dollars could be brought in from this grant writing class and it could help Green County a great deal. So that is something we are hoping to get going on the calendar very soon. The other one that I know that tornadoes were very devastating to many of the families and the, in my area, HHS, we have just put together Families Tackling Tough Times Together, Supporting Family Resilience in the Aftermath of Disaster. So I definitely want to bring that to the community because I know there is a lot of needs there. Emotional, social, all those, and this program has a lot of resources there. And then with Purdue Extension, we have several important partnerships within the community. Some of these include IU Brew Health, local libraries, strengthening families through CASA, Pace First Steps, all the public schools in the county, Miriam Home, Glenburn Community Buildings, the Sunshine Shop Food Bank, as well as multiple partnerships with the Health Department. And through these partnerships, we offer multiple programs that help to support the needs of the community.
Okay. Some, a little about the ag programs, both countywide and diverse throughout the community. Things like sustainable meat rabbit production, some health programs, learning what farmers need in the area via cost share, helping them with assistance and education. Things like beekeeping. Our Ag Day, which runs over 350 area, Green County, fourth graders, where they can learn all about different topics, get them invested in agriculture and the future of their careers. We also have a community raised garden bed here in Bloomfield at Eastern Grain and we're thinking about expanding. This is about teaching families, especially families with young kids, about eating their vegetables, learning how to get nutrition, also learning, teaching them about hydroponics. We're doing a couple sessions on those as well. We just got done with an apple crunch at three different schools. You won't believe how much kids love their apples, especially seeing them try these different kinds. And once again, an upcoming program we're doing, Indiana Code Red, very similar to the disaster management. Farmer Emergency Disaster Response Program, working with the local EMS, working with farm families, focusing on impacts with tornadoes, other natural disasters, and how they can bounce back from that, really rounding around the community as a whole. So I do have a list of programs. I'm sure they have a list that they can maybe share as well, but think about our partnerships here with Green County, how we're not only affecting with local programs, but then reaching out to the wider community and trying to get them involved as well and sort of get back and always getting responses from them on what they want to learn as well and how we can help them.
Great. Appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very big part of the community.
Do you have your programs on a calendar? Programs that you have decided to do for the year, do you put them on a calendar?
They're, I typically try to think about three to four months out, but they're not typically set until our monthly newsletter comes out. And that's our 4H County Newsletter on our Facebook page that everyone should have to email to. But I, if you guys want more in-depth things coming up with upcoming programs set at specific dates and you want those ahead of time, I can get that to you.
Do you think it would be beneficial? I mean, we're all about getting the word out as quickly as we know. Like we already have Ag Day planned. It's April 9th coming up like this coming year, but some of them is based on, you know, available, like how many people sign up and, but we do try to plan ahead because the partnerships, they want to know ahead too, so.
Do you think you have pretty good participation or is that a struggle for you to?
I think it depends on the venue, like where we're at. I know when I was doing some things at the library, I was not getting a good turnout, but more recently, I've had a better turnout. So I think it's also word of mouth and spreading the news and, you know, in the topic, if it's something they're interested in. So we're trying to get things that they're really wanting. What are the needs? Like a big one is dealing with the computers and technology of some of our population. So that's become a really big need and the library, the literacy group is writing a grant to try and do more education with kids all the way up to seniors. So that's something we're going to get more involved with.
Is that ever publicized on the signings out front there?
It has been.
Has it?
But I think there is, there's something going on with the sign right now, so that's something we're going to have to figure out. So I need to get, figure that, we got to work on that.
And we all try to keep our programs diverse for the general public to see what works, what doesn't, and then always asking them when they attend.
Yeah.
What they want to see in the future from us. Programs that interest them, that they can learn more about in the future. So like, at a soil health program, only six farmers showed up. They wanted more information on soil health. They wanted info on cost share, crop assistance, helping pay for cover crops, a lot of that stuff. But when it comes to things like beekeeping, I get 30 people that come. Even dealing with medicinal plants where we have that program, we had 50 people that show up to that. So trying to keep it diverse, see what people want to learn about, see how we can assist and educate them in the future and go along from there.
Good work.
Yep. Say it's, I think it's very valuable for our community.
We want it to be. And we're always trying to meet the needs, just find the needs. And you know, if you see needs that you want to share with us that you're not seeing, then we would be open to hearing those.
Okay, great.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll send you with a short list of programs done, how many people attended, and upcoming county programs and area programs.
Back to our extension agreement. I talked with Marvin about this Friday afternoon and I was just a little confused about some of the wording. Marvin, have you been able to do any talk with anybody on that?
Unfortunately, that's not been possible since you and I talked.
I think everybody's seen that agreement. And this is for next year's agreement. I just, I hesitate to move forward with this until we get some questions about, answer about the language. I mean, it's...
We have plenty of time to address it between now and our next meeting.
I think it's, I think it all matters on who's reading that particular document about what it says. So I would just like to have some clarification on it myself. So I guess I would entertain the motion that we would table the Purdue Extension Agreement. I guess I would entertain the motion that we would table the Purdue Extension Agreement.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? And anybody that's been to very many of these meetings, they know I don't like to table anything, so. Commissioner Michael, you have any announcements this morning?
I don't.
Commissioner Graves?
Yes, sir.
Our next regular meeting will be November the 18th at 9:30 a.m. in this room. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming.